Good evening. This is Boyd Michael, Superintendent of Washington County Public Schools. Tonight is the annual meeting of the Board of Education where they do a reorganization to elect a president and a vice president for the coming year. This is according to policy BCA and it's my duty to preside over the meeting until the president is elected. At this time, I'm calling a quorum is present for this evening's meeting of December 15th, 2020. And with that, I'd like to call Linda Murray if she would lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Constitution of the which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. At this time, I'd like to have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any, any discussion about the agenda this evening? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Seven oh, that we've approved the agenda. Also, we have, may I have a motion to approve the minutes on the point meeting with the delegation on November 10th, 2020?
So moved.
Second?
My second.
Okay, Mrs. Williams, second. Any discussion on those minutes? All those in favor, same side. Seven oh. And may I have a motion to approve the closed session minutes of November 17th, 2020?
So moved.
Mr. Gassford, a second?
Second.
Mrs. Murray, any discussion on those minutes? All right, all those in favor, same sign, please. All right, seven oh. And the last set of minutes that I need approval on is the motion to approve the business meeting minutes of November 17th.
I move.
Second.
Mrs. Williams, second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the approving the business meeting minutes? Seven oh, and the student concurs. Thank you. Okay, at this time in our meeting is the opportunity that we take nominations for the Office of President of the Board of Education. That'll take over in a few minutes and preside for the coming year. I'm looking for a motion for president for this coming year. Mrs. Murray?
Dr. Michael, I would like to nominate Mrs. Williams for president of the Board of Education.
Mrs. Murray has nominated Mrs. Williams. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Mr. Staffer, second that. Are there other nominations? Seeing none, we'll close the nominations for presidents. And all those in favor of electing Mrs. Williams as president for the upcoming year? Seven oh, and the student concurs. Thank you. And now, for the office of vice president to the Board of Education, Mr. Beckford?
Dr. Michael, I'd like to approve the nomination and appointment of Stan Stauffer to be the vice president of the Washington County Board of Education.
Second.
Second, Mrs. Williams. Are there other nominations for vice president of the Board of Education? Seeing none, we'll close the nominations for vice presidents. All those in favor of Mr. Stauffer serving as vice president of the Board of Education, please signify by raising your hand, right hand. Seven oh, and the student concurs. Mrs. Williams, at this point, I turn the meeting back over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. Colleagues, I appreciate the faith and trust that you continue to place in me, and I'm humbled by it. Thank you. At this time on our agenda, we usually have public comment, but because we're meeting virtually, public comment as a live part of this meeting will not take place. However, the Board of Education encourages the public to submit their comments in writing to BOE@WCPS.k12.md.us. We have no old business to conduct this evening, so we'll move right on to new business. And our first item under consideration is the consent agenda for this evening with Scott Bechtel, our supervisor of purchasing presenting.
Good evening, President Williams, members of the board, Dr. Michael. Tonight, I have six items for your review. These items were reviewed by our purchasing committee and are being recommended for approval, excuse me. And staff is available if you have any additional questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bechtel. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the awards and procurements for auditorium and stage renovations at Boonsboro High School to RW Warner, Inc. at a cost of $4,536,649. Professional Design Services Fuel Depot improvements at 820 Commonwealth to EA Engineering Science and Technology, Inc. at a cost of $135,960. Mobile device management for Apple products renewal to CDWG at a cost of $273,913.51. Gasoline and diesel fuel deliveries to AC&amp;T Company, Inc., Petroleum Traders Corporation, and Mansfield Oil Company of Gainesville, Inc. at the bid factor plus minus the current Opus wholesale price. Two digital black and white production presses to Canon Solutions American, Inc. at a cost of $120,662.16 per year for five years, and 80 sets of phonics readers to Scholastic at a cost of $107,995.80.
Thank you, Mr. Beckford. Is there a second to Mr. Beckford's motion?
A second.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Any questions for Mr. Bechtel? Mr. Stauffer?
Mr. Bechtel, so the public knows, could you explain the funding for the auditorium and stage renovations at Boonsboro High School?
Sure, Mr. Stauffer. So this is a public-private partnership between the board and the Nora Roberts Foundation. The Nora Roberts Foundation will be providing $3,615,149. The Boonsboro community fund is fundraising $330,000 of that to provide, to, to, as, as part of the project. The board has given $425,000 for the project. And then there is, the board is also paying out of the capital improvement, $176,500 for a secure entrance, which was add alternate one of the bid.
Thank you. And of course, the security improvement, we're putting these security vestibules at all the schools.
Yes, we, yeah, we've been working on that for the past couple of years now.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right, then we'll move to the vote. We're voting on approval of the consent agenda. Mr. Beckford's motion, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Right, seven oh, with the student member concurring. Thank you, Mr. Bechtel.
Thank you.
Our next item of new business. We have Dr. Gary Willow, our Associate Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction, who's here to present the 2021-2022 middle and high school programs of study. Dr. Willow.
Good evening, President Williams, Dr. Michael, and members of the Board of Education. I'm coming to you this evening to ask for your approval of the middle and high school program of studies for the 2021-2022 school year. Before I begin, I want to thank the counselors, teachers, administrators that provided feedback during this process. I also want to thank Board of Ed members of the Curriculum and Instruction Committee for their detailed feedback as well. When we look at our general updates this year, there are nothing, there are no major changes to our program of studies. Instead, we provided updated descriptions of our magnet programs and our signature description programs at the middle school level. And we updated the language at the high school level on assessments, graduation requirements, pathways, and programming. We really wanted to make this program of studies more user-friendly for our students and our parents. As part of this process, I come to you with the deleted middle and deleted high school courses along with the new middle and high school courses. So let's start with middle school. We deleted two courses from the middle school program of studies, the introduction to engineering design and the gateway to technology. The standards in these courses are covered in our newer technology classes at the middle school. And as the Board of Ed members may remember, we have brought foundations of technology from the high school, and we now offer that at the middle school, which also includes some of these standards. New courses to the middle school program of studies this year include foundations of computer science, which also counts as a graduation requirement. So now our students in eighth grade will have the option to take foundations of technology or foundations of computer science to meet that high school graduation requirement. As part of Northern Middle's IB Middle Years Program, we also added general music. For new CTE programs, we have three new programs at North Hagerstown High School, the audiovisual communications and broadcast technologies. We talked about this last year during this same meeting where we introduced the first course. And now we will be offering the remaining courses in this program of studies. We are also expanding the case curriculum to South Hagerstown High School. And under Dr. Michael's leadership to expand cutting-edge CTE programs, we are adding an Allied Health Sports Medicine Completor at Boonsboro and Smithburg High School. On the following slide, you'll see, the following two slides, you will see new high school courses. The majority of these courses align with the three programs that I just described to you. There is one exception that I wanted to point out. You will see that we are adding digital photography. And on our next slide, when we get to deleted high school courses, you will actually see that regular photography one through four is being eliminated. While we have one or two schools still using the traditional black rooms that you would see in a photography class, much more of our photography today is, is based around digital photography, where we're using phones, digital cameras, and other avenues, computers. And so the digital photography coursework better aligns to what we are offering at our high school level. Are there any questions for me on the middle or high school program of studies?
Okay, before we go to questions for Dr. Willow, is there a motion?
Yes, President Williams, I move for the approval of the 2021-2022 middle and high schools program of studies.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Gassford, I think I heard you.
Mrs. Zentmer was the second.
Oh, she was? Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Zentmer. Doctors Zentmer, excuse me. All right, we have a motion and a second for approval of the programs of studies. This time, we have questions for Dr. Willow or any discussion. Colleagues? Thank you. I see our student rep, Mr. Bakum.
Thank you. I already know I asked Dr. Willow enough questions already. But MSD recently released, released new high school graduation requirements. Would that affect the curriculum of studies at all?
It potentially could. Most of what the board has discussed and what Mr. Bakum is referring to, the state board has a committee looking at high school graduation requirements. Most of them, WCPS has already adopted, such as the fourth mathematics course. We also offer one credit of health life already, which was another recommendation. The foundations of computer science, instead of foundations of technology, was another recommendation that came from that group. And we are already offering that. We're continuing to monitor the, what the state board approves. Some of that was tabled for their January meeting, and we will provide updates and adjust our program of studies if there are any changes that come out of that.
Thank you, Dr. Willow.
You are welcome.
Colleagues, any other questions? Okay, then we'll move to the vote.
I actually had a question. I apologize.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Beckford.
No problem. I raised my hand too late. Just, I'm curious with allied sports medicine, will that program have some, will they be working with even some of our athletic teams?
Yes, as part of the fourth course, which we're really excited about, is an internship option. So they could be working with our athletic trainers. But we see this course is also for students interested in physical therapy, that they have the opportunity to perhaps internship at local offices. It really has the potential to expand in a lot of different opportunities. But like most of our CTE programs, we value the real-life experiences that come beyond the classroom. And so this has those opportunities built in as well.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, President Williams.
Absolutely, Mr. Beckford. Anyone else? I'll practice my wait time. Okay, seeing no further questions, we'll move to Mrs. Murray's motion for approval of the 2021-2022 middle and high schools program of studies. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, thank you. Have unanimous approval with the student member concurring. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Willow.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move to the superintendent's report. Dr. Michael?
Thank you, President Williams. The first thing I want to start with is something that I planned to feed with the board at the last board meeting. Still kind of formulating this idea a little bit. Don't have an exact name, but 100-day roadmap to accelerated learning for all, something along that line. I think I shared with the board. My belief is when we get back into full swing, we obviously right now, we need to do everything we can to try to be better in helping our students learn every single day during this virtual learning time in the various stages we're in. But at some point, when we do get back into what I hope soon will be a normal routine, I believe personally, there's going to be a need for an urgent recovery. There's a lot of discussion about two, three, four years is going to take children to recover. I don't believe the children have that long to recover. They need to recover quickly, and we need to get back on track with their education, and they need to learn the next subject matter, the next coursework, the next grade level. So I've tasked Dr. Willow, and I've also invited Mr. Neil Becker, the president of WCTA, to chair a committee. Mr. Becker has accepted, and I appreciate that, to co-chair a committee. It's going to take a hard look at where are we, what's going to continue to happen until we get to that point where we're back in school under, you know, level five, stage five, where we're back to normal. What can we do in the meantime? Right now, while we're virtual, as we move back into stage four or whatever stage comes next, what are the resources and things that we might need to help support our children? So I've asked Dr. Willow to start really mulling that around. He'll be working with Mr. Becker. We're going to be pulling together a committee, and more information will be coming out of that after the two of them have had a chance to meet. And we kind of organize and create some subcommittees. But I'd like Dr. Willow to start tonight with just a little update for the board of some new metrics that we've looked at, some new data that we have available to ourselves. I think it just helps to illustrate the urgency of how we need to recover as soon as possible. So, Dr. Willow?
Good evening again, Dr. Michael, President Williams, and members of the board. The purpose of this presentation is to share an update on student attendance and achievement since Dr. Pugh and I last presented on November 3rd. The first slide is very similar to what I had presented to you before. It is based on elementary attendance. The slide depicts a week-by-week elementary attendance. The vertical axis is the attendance percentage. The horizontal axis represents each week of the school year. The purple line represents 1819, and the blue line 1920, and the red line is our current year. Week one is the start of the year, and week 14 would have concluded on December 4th. We want to highlight a couple of things in this slide. On week four is when stage two began, and week seven is when we brought students back for stage three. During week 11, we announced that virtual learning would begin week 12. And as soon as we made the announcement to virtual, that our students would be returning virtual, we did see an immediate drop-off on the weeks that followed. Currently, if we compare this year to the previous years, we are down on our last week on average, 6% to 7% decrease in elementary attendance from week 14 of the previous two years to week 14 of this year. The middle school slide is the, the next slide that will come up. And again, it's organized just like the previous slide, with the red line representing the 2020-2021 year. Again, if we look at week four, beginning for stage two, week seven, stage three return, and then week 11 announcing that virtual learning would begin the following week, we see a drop-off as well. Currently, our middle school attendance is between 4% and 5% decrease from our previous two years. When we look at high school attendance, we see a similar trend. If we look again, this is set up just like the elementary and middle school slides, with the red being this current school year. Week four again, beginning, stage two, week seven, stage three. And then during week 11, announcing that we would return to a virtual setting. The decrease for high school started a little bit before week 11. But we normally see a rebound following those weeks when we look at the previous two years that we have not seen yet with high school. Currently, we are down 5% to 6% from, of a week-to-week attendance from the previous year. So when we look at attendance, we don't just look at a week-to-week overall percentage. The next slide will get into what we define as chronically absent. And as the board remembers from my previous presentation, chronically absent means students that have missed 10% of the school year. This slide runs until the end of November because we look at this on a monthly basis. So this is the percentage of students who are chronically absent by elementary, middle, and high school. Again, it's alarming that over 20% of our students have missed more than 10% of the school year. And with a school system size of around 22,000, that represents over 5,000 students that have been chronically absent through the end of November. The next slide will look very familiar. We presented to you the interim marking period, grade one grades back on November 3rd. We broke that down by content area. And in the blue would have been the percent that failed marking period one during the 2019-2020 school year. In the green is the 2020-2021 marking period failures by content area. This slide is middle school. And when we go to the next slide, you will see again the same setup for high school. Again, I think when we look at this, this will automatically be something that the 100-day committee will have to look at. To put this in perspective, we would be, if we took math at 22.9%, and we looked at high school enrollment, and we know that math is a graduation requirement for every student for all four years. Right now, we have over 1,500 high school failures in math for marking period one. And again, knowing that math is something that's required every year, and as we talked about at our previous meeting, these are graduation requirements. And when a student falls behind, there's limited options, summer school, evening high, or even possibly doubling up in courses the following year. So we'll look at options within our group to how we help with students, remediation and accelerating the learning of all of our students. But in particular, it gets even more alarming when you're looking at high school. The new, the next slide is new. We really wanted to see grade distributions. And so what you have here are three years. You have the 2018-19 grade distributions with A being the blue that you see at the top, and the failures being the red that you see at the bottom, and it goes A, B, C, D, F. So on the left-hand side is 2018-19, and on the right-hand side is 2020-2021. And what we see is really a shift in grade distributions at all levels. It's not like our D students all automatically became failing students. When we look across, we're seeing fewer As, fewer Cs, or Bs, fewer Cs. And then we're starting to see the increase in the Ds and the failures. And to Dr. Michael's credit, we have always been looking at all students. This pandemic has not just impacted our struggling learners, this pandemic has impacted all learners. And we think this graph helps show that grade distribution over the past three years, again, by marking period one. So what's our current strategies before we get into the 100-day committee work? We'll continue to prioritize the top big learning goals. We use small diagnostic tasks to identify student strengths and areas and needs of growth in upcoming units. We continue to work with teachers for a plan of pacing, instructional resources, and strategy. We're using our district literacy and math teachers to help lead professional development. We've have, several groups have created problem-solving sessions where at the school and the district level, we're working to address these challenges. We've expanded the use of technology to make sure that our students have access to all of the resources that they need in order to be successful. In November, we trained 200 additional paraprofessionals and teachers in reading and math intervention to be able to respond to the challenges that we were seeing in reading and math. I want to be clear that we know that our teachers, administrators, and ESP staff are working very hard to help our students be successful, and that some students have been successful in a virtual environment. We also know that nobody wants to see our students being unsuccessful. However, virtual learning is more difficult for the majority of our students. So while we continue to modify our plan and add supports while distance, while in distance learning, we need to be thinking about how we are going to help our students when schools safely reopen. I'm excited, as we look at the 100-day plan, for the opportunity to co-chair this important committee with Mr. Becker and to work with all of our stakeholders on creating actionable steps on how we can recover and accelerate student learning. This will take a full team effort. While we'll examine scheduling, practices, and programming, we also know that many of our students, we will need to address the needs of mental health. And we know that we've had students that have now not been in school for almost 10 months. And so the challenges of bringing students back to school will not be as simple as just opening the doors and welcoming them back. We will have to meet all of those needs. And so that's what makes this work so important that we're beginning because we know and we can see the challenges that our students have had during this COVID pandemic. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Dr. Michael. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Dr. Michael.
Thank you, Dr. Willow. And you know, let me first of all echo what Dr. Willow said about staff. I have been very, very impressed with the lessons that I've had the opportunity to witness firsthand on Zoom, or I guess that's firsthand, not in person, but certainly firsthand have the opportunity to see. The opportunity that I've had to visit our schools and see our teachers working extremely hard, using a wide variety of technology, putting their best foot forward to help educate our children. Just amazing work. Our administrators are constantly contacting children and trying to coach and champion the teachers and champion students to join and do their very best. Our ESP has really gone through quite a transformation, as Dr. Willow mentioned, about 200 pair pros being trained. I've seen that everywhere I go now. I walk into the room and up in front of the screen is, you know, a number line or working on some type of math problem, or helping children read independently or a buddy reader, or work on sight words and various things. It's just a really tremendous team effort. So, I don't fault anything that's happening of our staff. I think you're doing a tremendous job. I think our parents are doing a tremendous job in many cases. They didn't sign up to be part-time teacher, part-time Zoom coach. It's just the nature of the pandemic, excuse me, nature of the pandemic and the virtual learning setting just not being ideal for everyone. So, I think what Dr. Willow has kind of reviewed there is kind of, you know, highlights the urgency to get back in school as soon as we can. Our metrics right now just do not, are just not in a situation where we can even consider it at this moment. But a big credit to our staff, how hard they're working, and a big thank you to our staff for how hard they're working. Whereas this pandemic is not going to be over for education educators when the actual disease goes away, unfortunately. I think the most challenging work is yet to come. So, I appreciate Dr. Willow taking this challenge on and Mr. Becker for being co-chair with Dr. Willow. I look forward to the work. Obviously, we'll be in constant contact. I have a lot of ideas, they already have a lot of ideas. We encourage teachers and ESP and parents and administrators and community members that want to be part of this. Dr. Willow will create an opportunity to reach out and be part of this effort. But this is going to be about more somehow. This is going to be about better somehow. This is going to be about everything we do being more effective with the limited time we have with students. And I fear that it's not going to be cheap, and it's going to be, you know, tough budget situation right now, but we're going to find a way because, you know, we definitely want to see our students succeed. I think another thing, Mr. Willow, Dr. Willow said it's important, you know, parents, don't just be satisfied with your children having As and Bs. We really want to work to meet those grade-level standards because that's what's going to prepare your child for the next grade, the next course. You know, really stay in constant contact with your child, keep up with what they're learning. If you ever have any doubts, please don't hesitate to contact the school. We want to do everything we can help right now. We're not waiting to help, we're ready to help right now. So, Dr. Willow, thank you, and we look forward to the committee's kickoff, and board members will probably have pretty, you know, annual or pretty regular updates. Mr. Beckford?
Yeah, is it okay to ask questions?
Sure.
Okay. So, with the failing rate, how much of that, and do we know? Is it because they're not turning work in, or they're truly doing, turning in assignments that don't meet the grade, or they take a test and they fail?
Well, I think that's part of what we need to research a little bit more. I think a lot of the asynchronous work and other assignments that teachers are giving, what we're finding with some students, particularly grade-level students, you know, once they get off that Zoom session, that is what they're going to do for the day. So, you know, we certainly want the students to accept the responsibility for their work. We want the parents to accept the responsibility for the child's work, but we're also talking about children in many cases. And, you know, when that adult's not there, over top of you, keeping your work, keeping you moving, we're finding a lot of asynchronous work is not getting turned in, assignments not being completed. You know, it's difficult to dumb down the rigor of calculus, or AP whatever, or just even grade-level material. And so, we are expecting the children to try to reach the standards. We're obviously not using grades in any way as a weapon, but we are trying to reflect learning with the grading. So, it's one of the questions we actually have for our parent meeting this evening at 7:15. I know there's some type of parent question about grading, so I need to get myself ready for that, but it's very challenging, very challenging. Another big thing we're seeing attendance is certainly hurting the failure rate. The other fear I have, you know, we have more than 700 children that didn't return to Washington County Public Schools this year. I certainly believe a significant portion of them will return next year. I do believe a significant portion of those students are in quality private school or have excellent parents or doing a great job with homeschooling. But I do fear that there's a significant number in that 700-plus that are not engaged in the school at all. So, this failure rate, this attendance rate, might not even be reflecting another 400 or 500 children that aren't actively engaged in the educational process. So, I'm very alarmed. Again, I credit staff for tremendous effort that they've done, but we have much to do ahead of us. Mr. Beckham, I think you had a question?
Mr. Beckham, you're muted.
Thank you, good, thank you. I just want to echo Dr. Michael's statements, and so I just want to share like some student perspectives. So, throughout like distance learning, many students, like, they felt overwhelmed. And so, I think what leads to that failure rate is that since this don't turn in work, because like I heard this so many times, a zero looks better than a 13, or like a 20%, because this comes from, hey, I just didn't turn in work. That doesn't show like my true ability, but whenever they turn in work, they might fail, which was from my correlate to that. And then also, as you have students who are just logging in, like Dr. Michael said, this login and that's all the work they do all day, then all that work starts to pile up like a snowball. Many teachers use this analogy. You have a snowball and this keeps piling and rolling until it turns to a big boulder and ends up crashing, that student ends up failing. And I see like teachers, they're working so hard through twilight and extra tutoring, office hours. The teachers, I would love to commend you, you're doing all that you can. And it's just really hard to like be a student now, especially with distance learning, you don't have that accountability system. Many students live in home lives, which are not like welcoming their, they live in home lines, which have parents who are not making the child accountable to them. And typically, students, if they're not being accountable to their parents, they sometimes look to the school teachers for accountability, and that's also might be another reason why we see such drastic increases in failures and lower grades because that accountability system is gone. You just tune into a Zoom meeting for 30 minutes in each class, and that's it for the day. You know, that internet, inter-social emotional connection, like your teacher might be your coach, your teacher might be your club advisor, so those are a few things.
I think those are good observations from a young man. I am speaking in addition to the parent listening session tonight. I'm having a Zoom session with middle school students. I can't remember which group is tomorrow, which group is Thursday, but middle school students one day, high school students another day. Now, obviously, these are some of our student government representatives, want an opportunity to talk to them, but I think they'll have observations as well. Kevin, I think you might be invited to the high school one. I hope you're going to be there and help guide me through that, but I'll be anxious to see what observations students have. Like, as I looked at the attendance for the high school, when I saw that nine-week period and then saw the decline in attendance, one of the flags that went up for me is a student just failed a course for the first marking period. And to Mr. Beckham's point, you know, am I so far behind on work that I'm never going to catch up? Am I already failing for the year? I'm just, I'm just going to give it up. So, obviously, we're not going to give up on students. Talked to somebody, actually, at Smithburg High School today, they were excited that they actually teach semesterized courses, and they're going to have new students in January, kind of get a fresh start again with some students. So, you know, if there's an opportunity, we're going to relook at schedules. You know, while I put Dr. Willow in charge of this, it's hard for me to keep my fingers out of anything. You know, I just have all types of ideas, how we just have to go right now and do everything we can. So, Mr. Beckford, I think I saw your hand up again. I'm sorry.
No, I'm good, thank you.
All right. If there are any other questions, I'll continue here with a couple other announcements. Okay, tomorrow, we've identified as a Code V Day, which doesn't mean anything to students. It's actually a code that means something to staff. It will be a normal day for our students while we're in virtual learning. Right now, our intent is not to take snow days for students while we're fully in virtual learning. At the point we return in-person learning, that's certainly possible. We'll go back to our traditional snow days. But right now, we're trying to maintain the continuity of learning, keep a rhythm to what's happening here with our learning. Our students won't notice any difference tomorrow other than their teachers that have maybe been at school teaching, might be at home, and they might be figuring out a few things. I know some people were carrying some things out the door today and getting planning on setting up at home or have a setup at home. I know a lot of people are coming back and forth between school and home, and obviously, a lot of people are teaching from home right now. So, students, tomorrow is a regular day of school, Thursday be a regular day of school, Friday will be a regular day of school, and Monday and Tuesday. And then your winter break will begin. Staff will have a professional development day next Wednesday. So, just need to hang in there with us. I know it's, may not be popular, we're used to having those snow days, but right now, we're really trying to keep that continuity of learning moving forward, doing everything we can. We just don't feel like we have days to waste at this point. Our meal sites will be closed tomorrow and Thursday, and on Friday, we'll double up meals at our meal sites for those that are involved in our meal program. So, I did want to make that announcement as well. We are accepting Teacher of the Year nominations, so we have many, many outstanding teachers and doing an outstanding job virtually, as many of them do every day. We encourage people to go to our website and find the nomination form, and I think nominations are being accepted up through January 8th. So, that time's going to come up quick with the winter break coming up. To the board, I'd just like to say congratulations, Mrs. Williams, Mr. Stafford, for being re-elected and for your leadership. To our new board members, welcome, I guess officially, to your first meeting, Mr. Evans and Dr. Zentmeyer. And to our returning board members, certainly congratulations to all of our families out there, been working so hard with our students. I know you need to hang on here five more days, but mom and dad, you're going to get a break. It's coming up. Students are going to get a break, it's coming up. Just hang in there with us. We thank you for all the work that you're doing. I know it's going to be a really well-deserved break. It seems like it's been forever ago to Thanksgiving, even though it's only been a week or so. And I just wish everybody a very joyous, happy holiday season, a safe season, a healthy season. Stay, you know, keep from getting COVID still. Wash your hands, keep your distance, wear your mask where appropriate. Be very careful, please, with family gatherings. I know it's heartbreaking, but be very, very careful with that. So, you know, happy Hanukkah and happy holidays and Merry Christmas. And I certainly hope we're looking forward to a brighter year here with the new year coming up. So, those are all my comments for tonight, Mrs. Williams. I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Michael. Mr. Stafford has his hand up.
Yeah, I just want to say, if I were a kid, I'd try to find a good sledding spot that's also in a hotspot tomorrow. That's what I would try to do.
We might notice that on some Zoom tomorrow. Maybe there'll be some motion that we normally don't see. I hope not.
Thank you, Dr. Michael.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll have Dr. Pugh, our Associate Superintendent for Administration and Leadership with Personnel Actions.
Good evening, President Williams, Dr. Michael, members of the board. As discussed earlier in closed session, there are several staff changes for your review. At this time, I ask for your approval of today's personnel actions.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Is there a motion for approval of personnel actions?
I have to approve the personnel report.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Pugh? Are those in favor of approving personnel actions as discussed earlier this afternoon? Okay, 7:00, motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Pugh.
Thank you.
Our next agenda item. Board member committee reports. I don't know that we had any committees that have met since our November 17th meeting. If we have, are there any reports to be made? Mr. Beckham, did you have anything from student group, student government?
Okay, yes, I was muted again. We've been starting planning our first GA, which we hope to have. A G means General Assembly. So, we've been trying to plan that, and we're expecting to have our first one sometime in late January. So, basically, it's going to be after school, and it's going to be the delegation from different students, different student, SGA is coming together, and we plan to talk about the topics of dignity, respect, and advocacy.
Thank you, Mr. Beckham. Mr. Stafford, did you want to say anything about the May Legislative Committee meeting?
Yeah, there are quite lots of meetings, but a couple, a few things here that I might make mention of. Of course, in the reports from the state government and so forth, education is a hot topic. There's a lot of interest from legislators and stuff in recovering the student learning loss and how we're going to approach that. On the budget, the emphasis, we are, we're told that in the General Assembly this year, the emphasis will be on passing the budget, overriding the veto of the blueprint. And of course, if that is done, the Build to Learn Act will take effect also. There's also, in addition to that, some educational equity legislation will be the focus and so forth. And if I understood, Mrs. Williams, you were on that too. If I understood them correctly, because sometimes things get drawn out, but the State Board is not going to proceed with the, with the MCAP test this spring. Did I understand that correctly?
That's my understanding.
Apprehensive assessment program, yeah.
That's my understanding.
Yeah. That's good news for everyone.
Indeed. Is that it, Mr. Stafford?
There was a, an item about making, and I didn't write it down, but you may have caught it. The high school assessment for government, making some of those things 20% of your final grade. Did you catch that?
I don't have that, I don't have my notes handy.
I forgot to write that down, I should have. Board members, I sent that material to you, you can read that, and it's in there. So, I apologize for not being better prepared. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Stafford. Board members, with regard to member standing committees, you should have received in your packet last Friday information about standing committees. Our standing committees are to be announced at the reorganization meeting. So, this is the announcement of them. We have a curriculum instruction committee, a facilities committee, a finance committee, a human resources committee, and a committee for policy review and development. Each of those committees can have three members. No more than three members may be appointed to a committee. I hope that you had an opportunity to review the charges of the committee, and I'm going to ask that you have to meet by December 22nd, and you can email this to me, your three preferences ranked, 1, 2, 3, in order of most desired for the committees that you would like to serve on. And then, at our January meeting, we will vote on the appointments to that, to those committees, and to, we will also vote on the chairperson of each of those committees. So, do you have any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, under miscellaneous business, we always talk about future agenda items. You should have a list of those agenda items. Coming up on February 2nd, there will be a presentation on the Behavior Support Program. And then, we have a series of legislative briefings. And our legislative representative in Annapolis, Mrs. Artith Cade, usually attends and updates us on what's happening at that point in the legislative session. So, there's one scheduled for February, March, April, and May. If you have any requests for agenda items, please let a member of the Agenda Planning Committee know. That would be Vice President Stafford, Dr. Michael, Dr. Pugh, or myself. And I think that's it for future. And I think that's it for future agenda items. At this time, we'll move to board member comments. Have any volunteers to go first? Just raise your hand. Mrs. Murray?
I'll go first. I'd just like to say thank you to school staff for all of their hard work and wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and a safe and happy holiday.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Mr. Gesford?
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. I'd like to, first of all, thank the Nora Roberts Foundation for stepping up to the plate for Boons Bar. That is a significant asset that we'll be able to successively celebrate, and because of the foundation, we'll be able to do that. I'd like to welcome, for the first board meeting, Dr. Zentmeyer and Darrell Evans. We welcome you, and I hope you got through this first one. The first one's always a, a challenge because you don't know which way it's going to happen, but I look forward to working with both of you and I'm congratulating my fellow board members who won the election. Also, I'd like to take an opportunity just to say, wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, whatever celebration you do in your family over the holiday season to staff, for our parents and our students. I hope everyone stays safe. Also, thank my fellow board members who sent condolences as I lost my grandmother to COVID two weeks ago. So that's all I have, Mrs. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Gesford. Someone else like to go next? Vice President Stafford?
Yes, a couple of things. I'd like to thank my fellow board members for having the faith in me to resume my duties as Vice President of the Board. I don't take those duties lightly, and I truly, truly appreciate your vote of confidence. Secondly, I've been a little remiss in this, but I'd like to thank a few people who helped me with the election, my treasurer, Mr. Tim Davis, and another gentleman, Mr. Jimmy Black, both high school classmates of mine. And I'd also like to thank the public out there, anyone who supported me in any way, gave me sign placement areas, voted for me, spread the word, did anything. And I'd also like to say this, as a former teacher, I do worry about the, what we're trying to do with these students in this age of trying to teach them virtually a few hours a day, and I worry about the failure rates and the attendance rates. They are, they are not good. I just hope that we soon find an end of this. I hope this vaccine helps with the situation and to all, regardless of what holiday you support, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and let's just hope that 2021 is a much better year than 2020.
Thank you, Mr. Stafford. Mr. Evans?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank, I just want to thank all the fellow board members here for the support and advice you've been offering. It's, it's definitely a lot of information upfront, so I do appreciate that. And same goes along with all the staff at the Board of Ed here. I know I'm probably not supposed to mention them, obviously individually, but you've all been very welcoming, very supportive, and I couldn't thank you more for all of your support.
Thank you. Dr. Zentmeyer?
Echo those sentiments for a happy and safe holiday. My huge heartfelt thanks go to the teachers and staff that are making this very challenging time even possible. Your hearts are in the right place, and I appreciate it, and I'm humbled and honored to serve Washington County. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Zentmeyer. Mr. Beckford, did we skip you?
Oh, that's okay. Just a Merry Christmas and a Happy Hanukkah. And I do want to alert people that, because I normally co-host the Donut Drop every year on New Year's Eve, that there will be a donut, I got to get this right, donut drive-by on New Year's Eve in the morning. They're not going to do it in the evening because they, they really don't want people to congregate. But if you go down to the Maryland Theater in the morning of New Year's Eve between 7:00 and 10:00, Crumpies will be there to give out an individually wrapped donut. AC&amp;T will be giving out a free cup of coffee. There'll be some live music from Staff Infection, which is made up of many of our, our teachers and principals. And then the fun part is you get to drive under a banner that will be over South Potomac Street that says, honk if you do not, don't want it to be 2020 anymore. So it should be, should be a fun little, fun little event to say goodbye to New Year's Eve or to say goodbye to 2020. And then again, that'll be on New Year's Eve from 7:00 to 10:00 in the morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beckford. Mr. Beckham?
Okay, sorry, my computer screen was lagging for there. One second. I just want to echo the congratulations of Mr. Gesford and Dr. Zentmeyer. Give to all of those staff and E-members who work hard day in day. And I also want to reach out to the students and parents. Keep hanging in there. We just have a few more days left before break and turning in your work. Keep trying. All your teachers, staff, and even all of us board members, we're all here for you and we all support you. So keep, keep going.
Thank you, Mr. Beckham. I'd like to say how wonderful it was to have Mr. Evans and Dr. Zentmeyer with us. We started early this afternoon at 2:00 with a work session, moved right into closed session, and now our business meeting. That's a lot for anyone. And so I hope you found it to be interesting, and I hope you're looking forward to our next meeting in January. To all staff out there and to all of the families of students in Washington County Public Schools, I wish you a happy and safe holiday. Please do all you can to stay safe, and we look forward to a happier, healthier 2021. So, Dr. Michael, did you have any parting words?
I did not, other than amen to those comments. It's good to get 2020 a boo-boo.
There we go. We'll be on the road to recovery. All right. If there's nothing else, colleagues, we'll adjourn. Thank you all for a great meeting. Bye.